Meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. There was a change to the draft minutes because there was a vote that wasn't taken last time we had, we met regarding the meeting. So we did make a motion, seconded it, but we never all approved it. So we'll have to do that, which we can do at the tail end of today's meeting. So there's a motion to approve? A second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, review of the minutes from January 10th.
So I would move to revise the minutes to reflect that we did not pass the motion to do a virtual town meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open public comment. Is there any open public comment? Nope. Okay, being none. Guests. We have Megan and Brian Canucci for the Mortimer Proctor application. So do you want to hold, do you want to do all of the Mortimer Proctors at the end, but they're just here to speak on theirs, correct?
Yeah, I think it was one.
And maybe we could move everything from the, because you have it at the tail end to approve those?
Yeah.
We might as well just move it up now?
Yeah, and this is my first, yeah, that's fine. And this is my first Mortimer Proctor application phase, so I wasn't quite sure how it happened until the tail end. So some of these we've already reviewed, like the Beaver Pond deck and all that. But in the past, after speaking with Stan, he submitted them closer to the deadline in a packet, which is kind of what I've prepared for you now with a code.
Did the, was the Beaver Pond, was there a motion though to move it forward going to Mortimer Proctor?
I think it was approved, but you know, I guess it could be.
I'm guessing it's a no because I see Lisa shaking her head out.
No. Okay, so we'll have to do that tonight too then. We'll just do them all. So, but we'll let Megan and Brian speak to the.
We were, it was a last minute decision to put in an application for a playground at the rink. It is something over the past few years that we, we talked to Stan about it when we first took over the rink. That was something that we wanted to do and it was just last minute that we put it in and I just think it would. There isn't a playground on that side of town that could be used year round. And it would go, because you're looking at the right, the door to the left on the side. So the pine trees wouldn't be able to stay there. And it's just, I just think it's something that the community could, would, you know, they could use, they could be used all the time, whether it's baseball games and soccer games that are over there, the little kids could be on it, ice skating, there's little kids that could use it. With the roller skating, it's something that, you know, it's in the playground, we had taken out three and we, the middle one was the one that we liked the best. It was, was shipping and mulch that would have to go around. It was forty-eight thousand, I think was the total. So that's what, that's what we were thinking is something for the community, for all the kids, families, you know, grandparents that have grandkids and it could be used all the time.
So I have a question. So if like, say it went to Mortimer Proctor and they didn't approve the full funding amount, would you consider going with the, the lower bid?
We absolutely could, yeah.
Okay. Because that was pretty, that was pretty nice too.
We did three, just, you know, different levels. So it was, you know, it was just something that, and they have, you know, it was for ages two to twelve, the playground that we chose. And, you know, but if they would want different ones in that, you know, price level or the lower level ones, we could absolutely do that. It was just, we were just thinking about the community, the families and something for them to be able to do.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, it sounds like a plan and.
And I did check with the league, just because every time we do something like this, there, a lot of people are always about the liability.
Yeah.
But they said it's fine. We have city parks, playgrounds covered. What they would have to do is come in and see the site before it's put up.
Yeah.
And then afterwards. And then we just add it to our property schedule so that it's insured.
We also, we reached out to the reeds and they're willing to get the land, if it was approved by you guys and then by Mortimer Proctor, it would, they would get the land ready for.
The labor for the.
The labor.
And all the installation.
Yeah. And get any tool, you know, any equipment we needed. And I know that the pavilion is something that we'll be going there. I just didn't know, you know, that we don't want to take away from where that was going. I wasn't sure where that was going.
I drove up there today before the meeting and I saw that there is an area that's been like plowed out behind the building. So is that the kind, is that the area that you're envisioning?
That's what we were thinking, yeah. The trail is further behind. I don't know where.
There is a sort of a clear area like in and around there where the pavilions, I think would be a great idea for it there and all of it would be a great asset.
It looked like there was room for a pavilion there too. That would be a neat, you know, pocket park because they would connect the trailhead and then you've got the rink, the fields, the playground.
Lisa, do you know where they were thinking of putting the pavilion?
No, that, I don't think when we wrote, there was a specific.
And that, you know, we wouldn't want to take away from that. That was, it's just something that we could add to the community as an asset for families. You know, we, like, I work with a preschool in town and that's not available, seven thirty to five thirty. The elementary school, you can't use that during school hours and then Tapestry has it in the summer. It's just something that families and kids will be able to use. Yeah, just something else for them to make, you know, there's a, we want to make this more than just a roller rink and a skate rink. We want to make it more of, you know, it's for families, it's for the community. So that was our thinking.
All right. So do you want, I think we should do each one individually, make a motion to approve it to, because we have the other ones as well. So is there a motion to approve going forward with the Mortimer Proctor application for the playground at the rink?
So moved. Go ahead.
Second? Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, awesome.
Thank you.
You guys.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do the others next too because we're here. So the next one is Proctor Swimming Pool. Did you guys have anything that you wanted to put forward? I did get the, we got the estimates, everybody did, right?
Yes.
Is there anything else?
No, everything is there that's approve it, you know, deny it, whatever you feel is best.
Okay. Everybody's looked at it for the pool?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve that one going forward to the Mortimer Proctor?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else guys that you want to add?
Nope.
Okay. All right, it's approved. All right, the next one is the, oh, I skipped over. Beaver Pond. So I know we talked about it once, but I don't think we ever made a motion because they want to put that new dock.
I think the only one we actually made a motion on was the American Legion.
Car.
Markers.
Yeah.
Now, this is an extension of the current dock, right?
I thought it was a new dock, a second dock.
An extension.
Is it?
No, I thought it was.
Okay.
It's why they're doing like a sole source procurement too, so it'll, because it's supposed to align with the one.
With the other one, the existing, okay. Is there a motion to approve the additional dock?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's approved. And Proctor Graveyard, the flags. Is there?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And the last one is Our Yard. And that is for three thousand dollars to assist with the fireworks for the town of Proctor.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you not?
No.
Oh. I didn't know if you're not voting or you're.
No, I was nodding at your eye.
Okay. All right, just making sure. All right. So all have been approved. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right. Good stuff.
Nine seven thousand points.
Yes. That's awesome. Nice articles seeing them places too.
Yep.
Musical Theater is returning to Proctor High School. We just cast the Spring Musical, will be the first musical in three years. Yeah, three years.
Wow.
So.
That's great.
What are they doing? What are they doing?
It's called Lucky Stiff.
Oh, yeah.
It's about a guy whose uncle dies and he has to take his uncle's body on a trip to Monte Carlo to win six million dollars.
To witness what?
To win six million dollars. It's like Weekend at Bernie's, but a musical.
All right. Good stuff. All right, Highway Department. Foreman's Highway Report.
I don't have anything to add to the report unless you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions on the highway?
Nope.
All right. Schedule update for South Street Sidewalk.
Yes, so the engineers and the project managers, that's DeBois and King and Dufran Group, will be at our next select board meeting. That's not till the fourteenth of February. So during that meeting, we need to host a mandatory public comment period for that project. And inside your packets is an updated schedule for the South Street Sidewalk. And that's all.
Bridge weight limit signs, everybody saw those as well? Do they have a post?
Yep, so this is for emergency vehicles. The justification for this from the states, that trucks are getting, are a lot bigger than they used to be and a lot of bridges are out to date. So they just want to have these signs up. So emergency service providers know what bridges they can go across and what bridges they can't, I suspect.
How will that be posted at Mortimer Bridge?
What's that?
How will it be posted at Mortimer Bridge?
Well, you, you know.
Is it going to be on the bridge?
I reached out to the email sender just to see if Proctor was on the list of thirty-nine bridges and I haven't heard back from them yet. So I'm hoping to have an update soon, but that's a, that'll be a good question if it comes up.
Yeah, I wonder if it's kind of more of the, some of the smaller bridges that have kind of been weathered over time and, like North Street up until this last week.
Up until just now.
Well, the little railroad bridge there.
That's what I was thinking of.
Yeah, and that's coming up for.
Oh, the Iron River.
An evaluation in June. Yeah. That's questionable.
All right. Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the operations report. Anything to add or any questions?
Anything more on the O and M manual?
Um, yeah, that's, oh yeah, sorry. So that's coming up next here. All right, so myself and the Public Works Foreman met with DeBois and King and the Department of Environmental Conservation to review the required updates for the town's O and M manual, source protection plan and inspection for backflow prevention devices. This initiative started in two thousand nineteen but stalled once the town found out that there weren't any funding opportunities to update the water system maps in conjunction with the O and M manual. So those, these things, these two things were going to take place at the same time. Since updating the map with GPS points doesn't appear to take priority at the moment, the Public Works Foreman and myself will work with DeBois and King this week to split up the O and M manual updates between them and the town to narrow down the contracted scope of work, thus hopefully reducing contract costs. So there's a big list in your packet of things that the state gave us to do. Some of those things, DeBois and King is saying, well, I think the town can do that. And so we'll figure out which one of those we can do and we'll give DeBois and King the rest and I'll show you a, a scope of work here in the next couple of weeks, few weeks.
They didn't give you a lot of time to play catch-up.
No. But the state will work with us. I did speak with Heather who's kind of running the show with this and she said if we needed to push things back, we could push them back.
Everybody has the delinquency report? I just had a question, like all of these that don't have anything on it, like any agreement or if they're off or on, are those just kind of out there, like hanging out there or are they?
Well, I mean, let me pull it up real fast. Oh, thank you. So the ones on the right with curb stops, we've got to, I think I've spoken towards this a few times now, but we've got to go through here once the snow's gone and find curb stops and see who has one and who doesn't have one. And that will be prioritized. I mean, I'm thinking that if they don't have an agreement, what, what we have to do is go out there, verify whether they have a curb stop or not. And if they don't, they're going to be shut off.
See, some of them say paid. There's a paid column?
Mm-hmm.
My question is, is it paid in full and if so, are there charges now?
When they're paid, when they're paid.
It's the last time they pay a payment.
When they're, when they're paid in full, they get removed from the list. So yeah, this is the last time they, that was the last time they paid.
So that's the balance remaining then?
Yeah, and from what I understand from my conversations with Celia is, once we go out there and verify that we have what we need to shut them off, we're going to shut them off if they don't have an agreement. Or some reason why we can't do it, justification that we can't do it.
I just feel like there's, I mean, there's a lot here and I feel like we did a lot of those curb stop, you're checking to see who had curb stops already.
Well, see, that list was so, you know, this, we went from, since I've been here, we went from three pages to one. So I wonder if this is just kind of that leftover, all of those blank curb stops.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's why they weren't getting addressed for so long. So here, this is what we're left with.
As long as we're ready to start right away in the spring because.
Yeah, because some of these people haven't paid in like four years. They should have been.
There is some positive news though to this because the governor just okayed assistance again to be starting up again. So I know Celia and I had a long conversation today about printing out flyers and specifically sending that information to.
To the, oh, to those individuals.
The delinquency residents, which helped us a lot this last, I mean, that like knocked off almost a page or so. So hopefully we can do that, count that.
Thank you.
That one, Dorm Bridge Road, that's a. Yeah, that one affects, I think, three houses.
Yeah.
They're all tied together on that one line.
Yeah.
That's a more of a major.
Yeah.
Project.
Yeah, and that's one that John's been talking about, jumping on top up quickly as soon as the weather gets better.
The one right on top, the first one.
Oh yeah, some of them are high.
Yeah.
Well, that one's awesome. He's, he's just never paid it.
Oh.
If you look in the curb stop that says yes, off, that water's been turned off for two years.
So is there any recourse to go after somebody for that or?
There's a lien on the property and when they sell it, we'll get paid.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Celia was going to come explain that a little bit, explain that better than I did probably, but she wasn't feeling great.
Okay. All right. Is that it for water?
It's it for me.
All right. Is there a motion to go out of water into the Board of Sewage Commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anybody have any questions, comments regarding the activities report?
Does your easement thing pertain to this?
No, but I do have a Willow Street sewer update if no one has any questions about the operations report.
I just have one question, when they talked about the, the library pump station?
Yes.
And about with the controller being replaced with Styles Meadow one, wasn't something, wasn't Styles Meadow one that had issues?
Yes, Styles Meadow had issues and John came and spoke to me about that and I don't really speak that language, but he was able to use whatever was on Styles Meadow, but that wasn't broken, it was something else.
Okay.
On, on the library pump station.
Okay. All right. Okay. Tell her.
Yeah.
All right, Willow Street?
So Mr. Pangini was here at our last meeting and spoke towards quite, quite a few things about this project and I thought I'd just kind of clear everything up. So there's four categories of permits to review here. The archaeological is one and that was submitted in June of two thousand twenty-one before I got here. That didn't show any significant impacts. The other one's the railroad permit, which is still under review but moving along. You know, they're asking questions and we're answering them back. Nothing scary has shown up. There's a stream alteration permit, public comment opportunity that's been on the website since, since January thirteenth and that expired today. And there was, there was a concerned citizen who reported a wetland inside of the, the project scope and the state will send a representative to the site in the next month to delineate it. DEC has given the project team the green light to go out for bid with the assumption a permit will be needed to work in or around a delineated wetland. Any questions?
No.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to go out of the sewage commissioners to the regular select board meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Engineers' report.
Thank you Judy. I'm just going to roll right on through. If anybody has any questions, you can stop me. Town report, you can see on the table behind you that, that it's, it's almost complete. We have two new bond schedules that we need to put on there. I think there was for some water projects that got finished out before I got here. And we've reached out to the state, hopefully those will be in soon. Other than that, we're going to, we're going to do a check tomorrow and send it off to the presses, probably Wednesday or Thursday. The Assistant Assessor Offer Letter, we now have an Assistant Assessor and her signed offer letter is in your packets. The Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Meeting, it's a busy time of year, so we need to make up our meeting that didn't happen last, this last week. So the LHMP group will meet tomorrow to brainstorm and gather the information needed to continue the draft and stay on track. Good news, the town has been awarded thirty-seven thousand dollars by the Lake Champlain Basin Program to draft a stormwater master plan with the help of the Rutland National Resources Conservation District. I spoke to Nancy McGuire, who is the district manager and lead on the project, and she is beyond confident that these calls will cover the scope of work. Next step is to join the project committee who, who were, who will together choose a qualified engineering firm to write up the plan. She was acting like that would be me, but I'm sure it could be a select board member. We can talk about it as we get closer. These should be quick, a submitted reimbursement for the Willow Street project loan, in total amount eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Submitted my quarterly report for the local hazard mitigation plan along with my first of two expenditure reports. Just a reminder that, that the town share is being covered by In Kind Match from Labor. Standing for the skate rink cabin, scheduled for June fourth, two thousand twenty-two, the Rotary Club will be performing this work and I just wanted to thank them ahead of time for doing that. And I'll provide any updates as they come in. Beaver Pond Ice Fishing Event, this one's kind of exciting too. I think, I think they're calling it the Beaver Pond Family Fishing Day. And so it's not so much a competition, but just a day of fishing that's being hosted by the town. It'll be held on the twenty-sixth from eleven AM to one PM. There will be a raffle at one PM. More information on this will be provided on the town website and Facebook over the coming weeks, but if you're interested to learn how to ice fish or just want to have a good time on the pond, we look forward to everyone's participation. Well, and just to add on that, there's no plan for serving lunch there. I think in the future, if we get Pavilion, may we do like a chili thing, but this year it's BYO lunch. Oh, this is another good one. Fifty-two Main Street redevelopment update. Without making assumptions on the outcome, it's hard not to be excited to hear that Zion growers are putting together a redevelopment plan that should be completed in the next few months. Not pestering them because I'm, I'm sure they have their hands full with the redevelopment of the Hyde Building in St. Jay, but I'll, I'll look forward to any updates and hopefully have something for you in March and before then I'll let you know. Town Clerk Treasurer's Office Door Installation Academy Construction started work last week. The door is complete other than a, a striking plate for the, for the doorknob and they did an excellent job. They were great to work with, you know, that people were still able to get into the clerk's office and handle their business and exit. So I just wanted to thank Kerwin and their team for, for doing that for us quickly and efficiently.
Yes.
So if you haven't had a chance to see it, go down there and check it out. I mean, it looks great. Yeah, it looks great. They did good work. All right, so I've got two emergency management updates. The State Emergency Operations Center has been partially activated. They're giving regular, weekly updates actually to local leaders like myself on impacts and actions as a result of the spread of Omicron. If you want more information on vaccinations or strategies being taken to mitigate the spread of the virus, please visit healthcarevermont.gov. And then the Local Response and Recovery TTX After Action Review, I didn't attend the tabletop exercise in September due to my prioritization strategy at the time, but did attend the review on January thirteenth. By attending events like these that aim to improve communication during emergency events, I continue to become more confident in my ability to respond to imminent threats specific to this location with the help of my highly qualified colleagues. Website updates, aside from other things, the updated traffic policy has been uploaded to the website, as has the Beaver Pond policy. There's also assistance on the front page now for homeowners who are affected negatively financially by the virus. So they can go to the website now and find out how they can get that assistance from the state. And we're almost, we're getting, we're almost done. Meeting with Ed Bove about Economic Analysis Plan. The Select Board Member Hogan and Planning Commissioner Carol Protivansky set up a meeting with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to explore business recruitment strategy for Proctor. The RRPC has created economic analysis plans for neighboring towns and feels confident that future funding will be available for Proctor. The Planning Commission will be the lead on this and I'll assist with administrative work as the scope of the project becomes more defined. In addition to this, if you haven't heard already, Ed Bove will be stepping down as Executive Director, but as far as I know, he will remain with the RRPC, just not in his current position. Yeah, well, hopefully.
He was in the Herald the other day.
Yeah. And, yeah, hopefully he, you know, he stays, because he's been an incredible resource for me since I've been here, and, you know, I've got plans to work with him in the future. Did have plans, still have plans.
I think he's staying, just in a different capacity.
Yeah, good for him. And then the R R P C Board of Commissioners meeting, lastly, I attended the Board of Commissioners meeting as the Proctor representative. The committee reviews Act 250 and 248 projects throughout Rutland County. As Proctor's representative, I updated the board on projects and initiatives in town, and minutes and agendas can be found on the R R P C website. And my update to them this month was on Zion growers and the stormwater master plan. And then it's, it's not on the agenda, but I do have to add lastly that last year, for the alternative town meeting, the town sent out postcards as a, I'm not sure if you'd consider, consider it a warning, but just kind of how they can participate into it, and the Treasurer and Clerk plans on sending these out again. And I just wanted to give you an update that that's what's happening. And that concludes my manager's report.
Anybody have questions?
Oh, thank you, Michael.
Blur.
I didn't know how long that was until I looked at it.
You're a speed reader. All right, so discussion and action items, everybody sign the bills, right? Correct? Okay. All right, and Sheriff's Report, any questions on that?
No, I think they're doing a great job. I had an opportunity to talk with Dave Fox Saturday, and, and they're, he's pushing to make sure that this keeps up. He said he's had a hard time with, with people out with COVID, and they, they put stuff off for a couple of days, but he'd been trying to write them hard to get the stuff out. But I think we've seen more activity and on here, so it's, but it was great to, to chat with him for a few minutes.
So the, it's kind of on here, the procedures for the 2022 annual meeting. Finish the vote, and then. I was just jumping down to the warning too, so, that's all right, that's fine. So the last meeting that we held, we talked about having the meeting remote and voting by Australian ballot, and we did make a motion, seconded it, but we never. So if we could have a motion again to vote by Australian ballot, meet on Monday, February 28th by Zoom, and then Australian ballot on Tuesday, March 1st at the school.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
All right, Facility Use Agreement for Winter Carnival.
Move to approve.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, move it through the Mortimer Proctor application? And we, did you want a motion on that? You don't need a motion in the cards, they're just going to get that mailing rate for that. Okay.
We own the project, so.
Okay.
I'll just send them off tomorrow.
Is there anything else, anybody has?
Yeah, through the warning.
I have a question, but it might be considered old business. Somewhere in here is something about, at your last meeting, and I wasn't here, they talked about the mosquito control. And there's a line that says that the Select Board is happy with whatever's currently in place, the program that's in place. Are we not voting members of the district?
No.
So how do we, how does Proctor get the services of the district?
So we pay just for the services? If we wanted to be a voting member, we would have to buy into the districts. It's a pretty substantial cost, and they're happy right now with the way it is, and.
We are too.
Yeah.
Oh, I need mosquito control at Beaver Pond.
Yeah. But I, I had asked for, you know, a definition of the procedure and, and cost, but that wouldn't be forthcoming until we actually voted to, you know, join, but there is a considerable cost buy-in. Pittsburgh, I think, they had like $15,000 for like five years or something to buy into their building and their inventory and their equipment that they use and what have you, so. But they, we are under contract with them.
Oh, that's fine.
And they've been reorganizing and updating their bylaws and what have you.
Sounds good to me.
Very good job.
Okay, everybody has the Town of Proctor warning in their packet?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the Town of Proctor's warning as it's been presented to the Select Board?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I would just like to thank everybody for helping me out with that. It's my first warning that I published, so Lisa Meiser helped me, reminded me to put things on there I needed to do it, the clerk, a few of you as well, so I appreciate it.
Do you want us to sign this tonight before we?
That would be excellent. It'll go out with the annual reports.
Anything else anybody has? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.